All right, welcome this evening to Freeport Town Council Chambers. This is Town Council Meeting Number 10-24. Welcome to those visiting in person and those online. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is to find out who's here. Councilor Pillsbury?
Present.
Councilor Fornier?
Here.
Councilor Benoit?
Here.
Councilor Smith?
Present.
Councilor Pilch?
Here.
Chair John Egan is here, and Councilor Lawrence will be here momentarily, delayed with travel. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to remind members here, visitors here at Town Council Chambers to please silence your cell phones. We have microphones and speakers set up, so we try and avoid unnecessary distractions. We have a number of things that we're doing this evening. We're holding a public hearing, a single public hearing, and we're also setting four public hearings for the month of June. So we have some business to get to, and then we're going to have a budget discussion a little bit later. We're in the final stretches of our budget season. I'm going to start off with a request to waive the reading of the minutes from our meeting of May 7.
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are adopted. I have some announcements to read, a whole page here, so this will take a little bit. Absentee ballots are available for the June 11, 2024 state primary RSU 5 budget validation and Region 10 technical school referendum election. Please contact the Clerk's Office for further information on how to obtain an absentee ballot. Five new apprenticeship commercial shellfish licenses will be available for the 2024-2025 season. Applications are available at the Clerk's Office and must be received by June 1, which is coming right up. Also available by lottery, two adult resident commercial shellfish licenses and one non-resident student commercial. Those applications can be submitted to the Clerk's Office between June 1 and June 15. So if you're interested in shellfishing and getting licensed for that, please come see our clerk. Have you considered transforming your lawn into a beautiful alternative landscape requiring less maintenance? Lawn alternatives such as ground covers, pollinator gardens, and other types of landscaping can allow your yard to provide additional benefits to the ecosystem while reducing time and cost of maintenance and keeping lawn chemicals out of our water. The town is sponsoring a From Lawns to Landscapes free workshop on June 4 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Freeport Community Services Center. No registration needed, just show up. Join us to learn from the experts at the Cumberland Council Soil and Water District. Reach out to Sustainability Coordinator Mehdi Smith with any questions for more information, 865-4743, and Mehdi is at extension 104 or msmith@freeportmaine.com. South Street will be closed to through traffic from Bow Street to West Street on Thursday, May 23. That's this week from, sorry, that's next week. No, that's this week. Yeah, losing track of my days. From approximately 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon to allow CMP to remove two large trees near the Bow Street-South Street intersection. Traffic will be rerouted via detour and alternate route signs, so please plan accordingly, allowing for a little more extra time that morning between 7:00 and 12:00 on Thursday, May 23. Also, temporary one-way traffic on Justin's Way in town on Tuesday, May 28 through Friday, May 31. Crooker Construction will be performing some work between the sidewalk and the building with close proximity to a CMP pole, and this will require some adjustments and some equipment to be parked in the street. So Justin's Way will be one-way only from Main Street Inn on, from Tuesday, May 28 through Friday, May 31. And also, just to note that on the published agenda for this evening, there was a FED workshop that was scheduled for this evening, which has now been postponed to June 11. So there's, FED workshop is not happening this evening. Other announcements from other councilors?
Did you mention the comprehensive planning workshop on June 12?
Not yet.
Well, we are having a comprehensive planning workshop on June 12 at 6:00 p.m. I believe it's here.
FCS.
FCS, okay. Yep, and that will be to kind of provide insight to the comprehensive planning process and receive public input as well.
Other announcements? Okay, our next item is information exchange, chance for councilors to share some information from committees and things that have happened since our last meeting. I'm going to just do a brief demonstration about a new data portal available on housing and demographic information from the state in just a minute, but before we do that, I know that we also have a very important element coming up in our community from Meeting House Arts. And maybe I'll just let Suzanne explain what that is first, but there's a once snapshot about to happen about Our Town, Freeport. Suzanne can explain that much better than I can.
Suzanne Watson, 21 Carriage Road. Thank you, Chairperson Egan. I appreciate the opportunity. And on behalf of Meeting House Arts, I want to introduce something we've talked about a while now, but it's called "Our Town: A Community Self-Portrait." Is it okay if I bring some flyers up to everyone?
Sure.
Had something, oh, there it is. So this project is a while in the making. It's a National Endowment for the Arts grant that Meeting House Arts received last year, one of two in the state of Maine. And it's really about how we photograph and journal about Freeport, Our Town, and how we, in 2024, make a point, a statement in time, or a picture in time, I should say, of who we are as citizens and our place that we live. And so we'll have a two-week period starting this Saturday and running through June 8 for two weeks. We'll have not only the opportunity for people to go and photograph, and there'll be a total of 10 per citizen, and we're hoping to get literally thousands of photographs and journal entries pertaining to those photographs, but also to, just in general, what citizens are going to say. This is my town. This is my view of my town, and from a photographic and from a written perspective. This will be, we are partnered with Freeport Historical Society. We have actually 10 partners in total, but Freeport Historical Society in particular, because we're going to have a joint effort with other members of the community to curate this, the incoming flow of photographs that we get. And we'll have the opportunity then to choose some certain ones from a diverse group of people that will be enlarged and made into an exhibit, which will be put in the gallery at Meeting House Arts, but also be at the Historical Society. It'll be hopefully Town Hall. It'll be Freeport Community Services. So we're hoping to get a good response to this. Then we'll also have, this will be archived ultimately. These records will be archived at the Historical Society. So I've kind of been thinking about the time capsule too, and talking to Darrell earlier, that we could put a little note in the time capsule to say, "Look back 50 years," and find this archived opportunity to sort of see what, you know, expand on the time capsule concept. But we're also got kits, I've got a kit that I'd like to give to Sophie. I'll quickly wrap up, but that kit is a camera and a journal with instructions and a town map. And essentially, we have 40 of these to give out throughout town. There are certain locations, and we hopefully, people who don't have access to a cellphone camera, because many people we hope will use their cellphones to take the photographs. We have a landing page on Meeting House Arts with a tab at the top you can find, and you can input the photographs and journal items. But we do have an actual digital camera in these kits that we hope will end up at the library once people finish with them. So thank you for that, the opportunity.
Fantastic. Thanks, Suzanne. Great convergence of all kinds of things there through this grant opportunity. All right, so I'm going to just go down to the table down here and do, I promised, three minutes or less. Can I just leave this on the table, Tom? Yep. Actually, if you were going to ensure it's better. All right, I apologize for putting my back to the audience here, but one of the more recent opportunities for communities to understand what's happening in their community particularly related to housing, which is something that we're talking about, the state commissioned a report which was released last fall from a vendor that spent over a year investigating and interviewing and collecting information about what's going on in our state related to housing and the demographics of the people that inhabit that housing. And now, as a result of continued cooperation with the state and that vendor, there's now a portal that is available to any community, to anybody. MainStateHousingData.org is the web address, and you can go in and get a nice snapshot of what's happening in your community to be able to explain some things. So I'm just going to do literally a quick minute here on how to access the portal. It's MainStateHousingData.org is the URL, and then you go to this search bar, if you're looking at the screen where the cursor is, to select your community amongst every town in the state of Maine. And particularly for a lot of larger communities, there's a sort of a town center snapshot and then also the entire geography of the town. So that's what we're looking at here, the entire geography of Freeport. And I'm just going to explain briefly so that if you can go look at this on your own, you'll know what you're getting into. So it gives graphic illustrations of what's happening to demographics over the last 10 years, mostly driven from census data. There's information here about wages and what's happening with workers and also about housing supply. You can tell that there's an inventory here of what's happened with multifamily housing and single-family housing. The large jump in this blue graph here is mostly responsible from the opening of Cross Tree, which is a large rental property that opened up in the last few years. And so I want to just highlight a couple of these tabs across the top. This is sort of the summary look of the data that's available. Not every census tract has data, particularly in the smaller communities. But what I want to particularly highlight is, if you go up here to the Generate Full Report, this is where you get into a much deeper sense of what's happening in the community. So there's all kinds of graphs here about what's happened with our population, age distributions, income distributions, and I know I'm getting people dizzy by how fast I'm flipping through it, but I really just wanted to illustrate how important and how powerful this tool is for community planning. And the reason I'm highlighting it tonight is we're right in the middle of updating our comprehensive plan. We're right in the middle of looking at our land use ordinance. We're right in the middle of the reporting and data collection from our housing committee. So it's a perfect time to be examining this information, and I think that more informed the general public is about what we actually have going on in our community, the better those results will be. So I encourage people to take a look at it. MainStateHousingData.org is the web address, and it's a pretty cool tool. It's going to be continually updated by the state. Department of Economic Community Development and Maine Housing are cooperatively working on collecting information, and so they've specifically asked communities and other regional groups that if you find errors or some kind of askew in the data, to please report it in, and they'll take a look at it and make updates. So there's an office at DECD where you can funnel that information in. Anyway, I just wanted to highlight that and show what is available. I know we've had some conversations about what kind of information we may or may not have available to us, and if you go through this tool, you can find out it's quite a lot.
John?
Yeah?
That's great. Anything that jumped out at you that, when you started looking at the data, that we might want to key in on?
Well, there's a whole bunch of things there, but one of the items that popped out was the change over the last several years in the homeownership versus rental occupancy, that the number of units, of occupied units that are homeownership has actually gone up. But what also is happening is the number of single-family homes in the community that are not occupied has also gone up. So we have a rising number of vacant homes, which I think to some degree might be the short-term rental business, to some degree might be speculation on the real estate market, seeing what it will take for selling a house. I'm not in the real estate business directly, so I don't know what those trends might be, but it's interesting. And I think the other thing is, which is glaring in almost any housing report that you see, is that the median home price and median rent is far outpacing what the median incomes are. So more and more people are not able to, who are working for somewhere, anywhere near the median wage in a community, are not able to afford the housing that's available in that community, if there's even any available.
Do you know if they're going to add 2023 data? Or is this a one-time?
No, it will, yeah, it will continue to be updated. Yep, yep.
All right, let me just get back to my agenda. Hang on.
Can I do a Municipal Facilities Committee update?
Yes, in the middle of information exchange.
Yep. So Municipal Facilities Committee met on May 15. Our primary agenda item was to review the lease of the Dunning Boatyard at Porter's Landing with our longtime tenant. As you know, the five-year lease, that is the current lease, expired six years ago. So we've been on a continuing month-to-month holdover now, longer than the original lease term. Among other issues, that means the rental rate is now well below market value. We had a cordial and open conversation with our tenant, addressing our two major concerns with continuing this lease. One is keeping public access to the boat launch clear, open, and accessible. And two, keeping his business operations within the clearly defined lease premises and within the terms of the approved use of the property as defined by the lease. We reviewed the fact that this is the third lease of that property to this tenant, and was written 11 years ago with language clearly designed to prevent many of the same issues we are currently addressing. You know that we've received a number of correspondence from residents about this property in the last few weeks, and we affirmed the fact that the tenant's business is a valuable asset to the town and to many of our residents, and that working waterfront is an important part of our community. We were also clear that it is the tenant's responsibility to operate his business within the terms of the lease and our responsibility to ensure that the property is used in the best interests of the entire town. To that end, the committee has requested that the manager draft a lease proposal for the Dunning Boatyard that includes the following. One, a one-year lease term. Two, an updated site plan clearly delineating year-round lease premises, winter dock storage, and continuous public access. And three, an updated rental rate and based on the current market value. The committee will review this proposal at our next meeting, which I believe is June 12. And the current lease grants the tenant first right of refusal, sorry, first right of renewal if the town opts to lease the property for the same purpose, which is what we are considering. It is ultimately, though, up to the council to determine if the town will continue to lease this property for that purpose, and if so, under what terms. And it's up to the tenant to determine if he can safely, responsibly, and profitably operate his business within those terms. The proposal for a one-year lease term is intended to help both parties assess the answers to all of these questions. We're not asking for council action at this point, but wanted to update the full council on where the Municipal Facilities Committee is and happy to answer any questions you have at this point.
So the new agreement is a completely de novo lease, correct? Or it's, there's no continuation or extension of the existing agreement, right?
No, I mean, the current agreement is continuing month-to-month within the holdover clause, but the issue would be that we would need to negotiate a whole new lease. And that would include a new site plan, because even though, as I mentioned, this lease is 11 years old, it's using a hand-drawn site plan from previous leases, and I think that has been the source of some confusion, and it's simply long overdue to update the site plan.
So in the interim, so until it's fully executed, the existing agreement stays in place, and you're proposing a year from when the new agreement is put in place, or a year from now?
It would be a year from when, it would be a one-year term that, when it was executed, it would be a year from then.
So it, no?
So maybe that's what the committee was thinking. It's not what I was thinking. I was thinking it was a one-year term, given the conversations I've had about the importance to create kind of a place within the season, that we would be looking for that to end, run like July 1 to June 30, so that everything could get out of storage and, so we're not, it also doesn't create any benefit for not agreeing to the lease.
That's what I'm concerned about, that this could drag for a long period of time.
Oh, yes. Well, I think the intention of the committee is, again, for this draft, this proposed lease to be reviewed by the committee in the month of June, for it to come to council. If, in fact, the terms are agreeable to the tenant, that it would come to council in the month of June with the intention that it would start, as you say, July 1. So that is the intention, is to move this process along. I think if, in fact, what we hear is that based on what the town feels are the appropriate terms are not acceptable to the tenant, then we would, I think that would send us back to, how are we drawing the current lease agreement to a close at that point? But we had originally intended for, you know, that without a new lease agreement, that we would allow the current lease agreement to go for a few more months if it was going to come to an end altogether in accommodation of the season. But if we were going to extend it into a new season, that would need to be negotiated very soon.
Great. Thank you for doing.
Should question. You guys didn't look forward into what the future might look like for that site with a new tenant. It was focused more on how do we?
Correct. I think we, the existing tenant asked the question of the committee of what is the town envisioning if it wasn't going to be leased for the same purposes. And I said that we did not have the idea that it would be leased necessarily at all for a different purpose, that it may simply be conserved for town use with the understanding that it has long been the intention that the public access and the commercial use coexist side by side, and that the concern is that there has been diminished public access, at least in the perception of many residents, because of the commercial operations. And so if, in fact, we were mutually deciding that we, those could not coexist, that the preference from the town would be to maintain public access over commercial use. And so it would simply go back to being only public access.
Thanks.
But ultimately, again, that's a question for the council.
Other elements for information exchange? All right, we will move on to the Town Manager's Report. Sophie?
This is actually kind of a long one, so I just want to report back on a couple of items that council had referred to staff, just give you a brief update. And I know I have been updating people when they ask, but we've never really said it on camera. Council had referred a matter to staff involving a resident who had a zoning boundary, zoning district boundary line go across their property. There were two issues there. One was specific to that particular resident. The other was the idea of what happens when any parcel gets bisected, or not necessarily, when a boundary line travels in the middle of a parcel. So staff has moved a fix to the planning board. It's going through the planning board process, and you should see that back here in the next month or so. And also, we would expect in the next month, you will see proposed consent agreement dealing with setbacks, which you have done before for existing buildings, which should solve that resident issue. The other issue that got referred to us was, whoops, I lost it. We had concerns sent to council about traffic safety on Route 125 at the intersection of Lunt and Grant. That would be by the Freeport Market, Freeport.
North Freeport Country Store.
There we go. We met with, Earl and I met with Complete Streets briefly to let them know that we've engaged a traffic engineer to look at that, who will come back with recommendations for what we think would be a short-term arrangement there. We also, as part of that study, are asking them to look at the intersection of Pleasant Hill and Flying Point for how to address safety concerns there, both short-term and longer-term, because we do think that there's an issue there that could be significantly improved with movement in the road, to line the road up better. I do want to bring to your attention that this does change our method or practice with regard to implementing traffic calming measures. I am going by what I have, how I have been trained, and that is that we don't change traffic calming measures without engaging either DOT to sign off on it with their engineers, if appropriate, or a traffic engineer that can really look holistically at the problem. So we expect those will be back in July. Chief Goodman is helping us out with the dynamic speed signs, collecting data, which actually saved us a bunch of money on the scope for this, which I was really happy to see that work. So just to let you know, those have not gone in the "we'll get done" bucket. They're actually in process. Also want to let you know that we have some changes in Public Works projects that we just want to briefly bring to your attention. We're excited to report that Noble and Freeport... attention. We're excited to report that Noble and Old Freeport Roads are done. Old Freeport, Old South Freeport Road will be paved on Thursday, weather permitting. Huh? Oh, it's done, done. All right. Don't you love it when I miss that? Flying Point Road, there, that project was mill and fill with some minor construction. What we, digging into that project, what we have learned is we need survey and engineering done to deal with a couple of pieces of the road that need to be laid out a little bit differently. Earl and I think that we can get the engineering done this season, which will move construction to be bid out next, next season. And long-line striping, we've been, we've been laying down a lot of paint. And the short stuff, the short pieces and arrows and parking spaces, crosswalks, have all been done by hand by a very talented public works team. The long-line striping, which, when they stripe in the rain, turns a whole road yellow, if you hadn't figured that out. It has been delayed because Earl has set some boundaries on weather that we will stripe in. I would also just bring your attention to, on June 4, we are going to have a climate action plan workshop as part of other business at the 6-4 council meeting. It's really important because the person who has really shepherded this whole project through with Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, Mehdi Smith, will be leaving. She's decided that she wants to travel the world before she decides what she wants to do as a final career. So, she's going to be leaving at the end of June. So, we really need to have some clear guidance from council to wrap, to be able to wrap that up. On June 6, the ordinance committee is going to meet, and it has a very full agenda. We've got ordinance revisions in public peddlers, special amusements, minor revision for short-term rental registration, proposed ordinance repeals, Styrofoam ordinance, pinball and video game machine ordinance, newspaper vending devices on public streets and sidewalks ordinance. And we also have some proposed new policies and ordinances. So, we're proposing a policy regulating soliciting on town-owned property, ordinance implementing a municipal tree program that the Tree Task Force has been working really hard on, and a social media policy for town employees. So, that's going to be a really full agenda, and you might want to just drop, drop in as a visitor. The other public meeting that the public might really be interested in is on June 11. The Complete Streets Committee meets at 7:30 a.m. right here in council chamber. The consultant that the town worked with Greater Portland Council of Governments to fund had, has multi-use path alternatives that are going to be discussed. Those ultimately will be brought to the council, but this is a public meeting, and we would allow, we would welcome some public input there. Sitting in the second row, I've taken too much time for him to actually speak, is Enoch Boudreau. And Enoch has been visiting us at Town Hall. He's been doing a lot of projects. He can really turn words into data very quickly. I am so impressed. He is a senior at Freeport High School and is doing a senior project with us. He's just been doing an amazing job. And he had to remind me that he wasn't an employee, and he wasn't going to keep coming back. So, we'll, we have him for three more days. So, with all that wonderful news of the great things that are happening, I'm going to end on the note that yesterday, we received notice from Freeport Community Services that its board was meeting, and actually did, we confirmed, vote to terminate its agreement with the town to provide general assistance administration services. So, it's a 90-day termination period, and staff is scrambling right now to try to find out whether or not there is another place to, to partner with for those services.
On Flying Point Road, particularly up by the Pettingill Heights area or whatever, if that's going to be postponed a year, it's getting a number of holes, and it's a challenge, particularly with bicycles riding up the hill. Is that going to be some sort of temporary service patch put in there to lessen that, or not?
We're going to pay a little bit more special attention to it, knowing that we've got a project to push out.
Because we've got a lot of traffic, it's going for the campsite and Bull's Neck Park and stuff. But, thank you.
Eric?
I've got a question about road closures, not the ones you mentioned, but one that was, I think, surprising to some folks that I heard from this past weekend, Saturday, because of the 5K that Councillor Benoit participated in. And I believe it's a fairly consistent 5K route that is used for a number of organizations. It means the closure of part of Depot Street, and where that part of Depot Street falls really impacts a lot of traffic. And there were residents who were surprised that they could not access where they were trying to access on Depot Street on Saturday, and in fact, had called dispatch to see if the road was closed, and dispatch told them that no, it was not, and that they did not know anything about any kind of road closure. So, I just want to, because it's not, it's not just a one-time thing, it is the same route that is used by multiple organizations for, for 4 or 5Ks throughout the year. It seems to be a somewhat consistent issue, and I think there needs to be some sort of procedure in place around that.
So, what is concerning to me is there is a procedure in place around that. So, let me do a little bit, I see Chief Goodman writing right now, so I don't even think I have to make a note. I think we'll be able to give you a report back in my weekly report.
And for what it's worth, my own husband was directing traffic there for a few minutes. And that has been brought up to the planning committee, who planned that 5K, so maybe that can be a more, a broader conversation with everybody who uses that, that route. Yep.
I know you're working on this, not to put you on the spot. We have gotten some comments around the procedure for filling the sewer board seat. Can you comment on what you know as to the process? And if we still need investigation, that's fine, but I know people are anxious about that.
Okay, so I can answer that. Actually, the town council does make the appointment to the sewer, to the sewer board until the next election. So, you'll do it through, if you have a candidate, through November of '24. And people can take out nomination papers in July for that permanent position.
A candidate for that interim sewer district board seat. And when we get to the consent agenda, I'd like to add his name to that consent agenda, so that we can move that candidate forward, and then Chris can get that person sworn in and fill that seat, at least until November. That was news to me, so I apologize. I sent some emails to folks saying that the town didn't actually appoint or have any authority over the sewer district board, but was corrected for, in an interim basis, we actually do pick up that responsibility until the next election. So, anyway, so we have a candidate, and the nomination will be added to the consent agenda shortly when we get to that. Dan?
Question about engineering for traffic calming measures?
Yes.
Which sounds like a great idea. Question, does that apply to every traffic calming measure we do? If we have something that there's just general consensus on, we know what needs to happen, do we still need to have it engineered?
So, I wouldn't use the word "every," but I think if we were putting in major things like stop signs, we would want something on a route, not a, not everything, but the places that we get complaints, probably most of those, that where, where traffic is going 20, more than 25 miles an hour, where there are multiple points or multiple issues that get identified. I think if we had any raised crosswalks outside of what has already been engineered for us, so on hills, on, you know, that type of thing, we would want those to be very carefully evaluated.
We have some discretion. It's not a, a, a policy that must be adhered to all the time we can say.
No, it's, for me, it's, you know, when you've got sightline issues, and you've got traffic that's going 45 miles an hour, that's really probably going closer to 60. Those are places that I don't think we just want to pop a stop sign down.
Thanks.
How does that apply to state roads, like Route 1 that is residential and commercial in town?
So, we can't do that on a state road. The state would have to come in with their engineers and approve a plan. So, I've worked before with the state where we kind of came up with a plan, and then they put it through their engineers and gave us the thumbs up. But, really, the state would, on their roads, require traffic engineering at some level to be done, or it would need to follow their very specific policies.
On that note, did we have any luck in trying to get them to change their mind about allowing a parklet on Main Street?
Well, Earl and I, Earl, would you like to talk? Earl likes to talk.
I did reach out to MDOT, and got, got a response back, a written response, which basically said that the parklets were created or allowed, they put on state roads because of COVID. Now that all the COVID restrictions have been lifted, that, that use goes away with it. So, Mr. Randy with MDOT is the one that gave me the clarification of it. So, as of right now, no, we haven't changed their mind. I may be overstepping my bounds just a little bit, but this may be something that we try to go at a different way. Instead of a state road, it's a town request. I think you'll get a little bit more traction with that.
So, Earl and I are meeting with Brett tomorrow to talk about an alternative pathway. No promises.
Thanks, Earl. Thanks, Earl. Any other questions for the manager? All right. Our next item on the agenda is public participation on non-agenda items. This is a chance for members of the public that are here in person this evening to make comments, share your thoughts with the council. If you are here for an item that is coming up later in the agenda, we have a number of public hearings. We'll have a chance to hear your comments then. This segment is for items that are not on our agenda. Do we have anybody that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Please make your way to the podium. Tell us who you are.
Good evening, neighbors. My name is Daniel Freund, and I live at 38 Chee-Hawk Road in Freeport. My concern is about the excessive expenditure for medical insurance by both the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust and the Maine Educators Association Benefit Trust. And my concerns are well-founded. In the past two weeks, there have been a couple articles that are worth bringing to your attention. Incidentally, previously, I'd mentioned to the council that 14 years ago, this issue was studied by Cape Elizabeth, and they found that Antfam, at the time, was charging very excessive premiums for the insurance program, and that, that, that hasn't changed. On April 26, Mike Scarcella wrote for Reuters, Reuters, excuse me, quote, "2.7 billion-dollar class-action settlement with Blue Cross Blue Shield," accusing it of nationwide insurance overcharges. Health subscribers in long-running litigation in Alabama federal court accused Blue Cross and Blue Shield Association and related entities of unlawfully agreeing with each other in violation of U.S. Health Trust law. This problem is not just a name. The Rand Corporation had an article on May 13, five offices, Chris Watley, Laura Furber, and Blad, and Aaron Koffner, and Brian Briscoe, quote, "Because employer-sponsored spending." The Rand Corporation, quote, "Because employer-sponsored," that would be the town of Freeport and RSU5, okay, "spending comes from employee wages and benefits. Employers have a fiduciary responsibility to administer benefits in the interest of participants. The lack of transparency pricing in healthcare markets limits employers' ability to knowledgeably develop or implement benefit design decisions. California, Florida, Georgia, New York, South Carolina, West Virginia, and Wisconsin were specifically mentioned as having prices in excess of three times the Medicare rate. Maine, I believe, is above that, at about 320% of the Medicare rate." I asked the council to instruct the town manager to engage in a discussion with me to model one simple email to each trust, inquiring about specific issues to help lower the cost of insurance. I asked that the manager and I develop the draft email prior to the next council meeting. Together, we can save more than $100 million for Maine, while improving compliance, employee engagement, and reducing HR labor. I just want to say that I've had conversations with Senator King's office. They're taking an active role in this. They encouraged me to contact the Department of Justice, which has a special committee about this, which I have done. And I asked them to also reach out to the Maine Superintendent of Insurance and the Maine Attorney General's Office, where the state of Maine is paying 55% of that extra $100 million. I thought the state of Maine would be interested. Thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Thanks for your comments, Daniel. Anyone else wish to address the council on non-agenda items?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you people. I have an assistant that's going to come up and give you some books, and there's a page in there, page eight, that tells you what's going on. I'm here to talk about the great race coming to Freeport, Maine on June 28. If you're not familiar with, excuse me, what it is, it's a rally. We're bringing in 130 cars on Main Street, and we got, we figured from 5,000 to 8,000 people coming to town.
Sir, could you please introduce yourself, so we know?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we know who you are.
My name's George Brockman. Everybody knows me by Dodo in town. I live on Baker Road.
Thank you.
And I have Freeport boat outlet. And so, I've been, got involved, thanks to Sue. She said, put me to work. So, she's putting me to work. So, when I got, got involved, I found out that we need some money. And we need the money to pay for the fire department, the highway department, and the police department for this to happen. And we're getting, it's, so, I said, well, let's see what we can do. So, thanks to LL Bean, I've raised $5,000 for this purpose. But, we're like $7,000 away from what the quote is from you people to do, for charges. It's $8,800 for the police department, $3,700 for the fire department, and $1,200 for the highway department, for us to close down the streets, reroute traffic for this to happen. We're still trying to raise money. But, if we don't raise the money, I don't know what we're going to do. So, I had a thought. And we're not going to use all that $5,000 that LL Bean gave to us, that $5,000 to go towards paying the town of Freeport. And we, so, I'm here to ask you to, whatever we have... And we, so I'm here to ask you to, whatever we have left over from that five grand, plus we're going to have some other money, I think, coming in, that you waive the rest unless you want an IOU. But I'm not to be, it's just what's happening. It's, there's a lot of work involved, a lot of good people, and Sue is really pushing this. And it's quite an opportunity to have this happen in the town of Freeport. And I know that last fall, I wasn't involved, that you people welcomed it on. So, now we're welcoming it, but a little short. And we're still raising money. But when we get a bill from the town, unless we, we're not going to, if we don't, if we don't raise the money and a few people can't help us, then we don't have them come to Freeport. And we've already...
Yeah, I'm, I'm confident that we'll find some solutions to make this happen. There's been a strong endorsement from the council for the event, participate and to host it here. So, I'm personally very much looking forward to it. I'm hopeful that we can find some manner to work out something here. So, a couple of hands up. Daryl?
Took the words out of my mouth, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm hoping that maybe a straw poll that, you're, you're pretty good at fundraising, Dodo. So, I think there'll be other revenues coming in, but I don't think we need to turn a blind eye. This is a great thing for Freeport. So, I, I hope, yeah, I think pretty much everyone sitting here up here wants this to happen. It's wonderful and, yeah.
It's, you know, it's June 28th and it's a big thing, a big thing coming here. And especially, and Sue will be leading the way in. And we're getting, and the help of the town manager, the highway department, police department, fire department to let this happen. It's a, it's an affair. It takes a lot of people to make this happen, make it run good, too. And we look forward to doing it.
This particular segment of our agenda is not an action item, so we're not going to actually take any votes right now. But I can tell you that we'll have conversations here and we'll find a way to get this, to get this on.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the council on non-agenda items? All right, so we're going to move on to the action part of our agenda. I'm sorry, we're not, yeah. The consent agenda is the first element on the action items. I'd like, as a member of the nominations committee, I'd like to amend the consent agenda that we're about to vote on and add Robert Myrick, who goes by Lance, as a interim Freeport Sewer District trustee nominee. And it was pointed out earlier, to correct my false interpretation, that the council actually does have the authority to appoint interim trustees to the Freeport Sewer Board, even though they are their own quasi-municipal entity. So, this would be an appointment for Mr. Myrick to serve out a vacant term until the next election, which I believe would be in November. So, we'd add Robert Myrick as a Freeport Sewer District trustee to the consent agenda.
So, moved. Second.
So, we're voting to add Robert and then we'll vote on the consent agenda. So, the vote to add Robert's name to the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? I don't see any. All right, and I'll read the motion for adopting the consent agenda. Be it ordered that the May 21, 2024 consent agenda, as amended, be adopted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, our first real action item is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing relative to a special amusement permit renewal for Athena's Cantina. We will open the public hearing and then we can hear from staff and the applicant if needed. Applicant's comments are not required, but she's welcome. So, anybody here to step forward and give your comments in a public hearing about the special amusement per, special amusement permit renewal for Athena's Cantina?
Hi, my name's Amanda Kent. I live on Lambert, off of Lambert Road. And as you all know, because you've seen me here before, we totally support and stand behind the food truck park in Athena's Cantina. It's just going to be a great benefit to add to the food truck park. And I know that they're very conscious of any quiet times when it's supposed to be. And I think it'll add a lot to the neighborhood and toward more things happening. So, that's it.
Thanks, Amanda. Anyone else wish to make a comment in the public hearing? Please step forward.
Hi, my name is Mila Jones. I've spoken on Tais's, for her before. I think that Athena's Cantina and Tais are really important to this developing experience economy that is an essential part of Freeport's economic future. She's got really great ideas. She's really innovative. We have tourists coming this summer. They want things to do. They want novel experiences. And she's going to be a really important person in the future of Freeport, along with Athena's Cantina and those who work with her as we develop the future of Freeport.
Thanks, Mila. Do we have online comment?
No.
But I do want to make some clarification if I can.
When we close the public hearing, we'll take it up to staff. Any other members of the public wish to comment during the public hearing? All right, not seeing any and no one's online. We'll close the public hearing and I'll just read the item to get it on the table. Be it ordered that a special amusement permit renewal for Athena's Cantina be approved? Second. All right, so for discussion, it's been moved. The manager advises that there would actually be a condition on this vote tonight because we still don't have a couple of inspections. Is that it?
So, the, the inspections have been done, but there's some work that needs to be completed before they'll sign off on them. I also just want to be clear that the special amusement permit is for the brick and mortar of Athena's Cantina. It is not for the other section, the food truck. Because the food truck, we've got some clarification from liquor enforcement, which is where the special amusement permit generates from. That is a temporary permit that Nick is working with Tais to get through the process. So, it's a temporary activity permit as opposed to a special amusement permit. The liquor license that she has is for Athena's Cantina. She needs a special amusement permit for that. Outside, there is a limitation on how far outside a building a liquor license goes. It then becomes a temporary activity permit, which is a code enforcement permit, not a town council permit to issue.
So, we don't have to see that again. That can just be done ordinary. Great. And that paperwork's in, in flow?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Daryl?
I received a couple of calls and talked to manager on a couple of issues. So, I'll make sure we have a noise ordinance is in effect and that can be monitored. So, I told the citizen that if in fact there are issues, we know how to deal with that. We can address that through what ordinances we have standing. The other concern that was brought up, which we have no authority on, is the parking down in the areas. That's a private parking lot. We have no control over that. So, I asked that the people work out what are the various issues that may come up or may not come up. But that was the only concerns that were brought up on this.
Other questions or comments from the council? Hang on, Tais.
Quick question, the temporary activity permit, would that also allow for music?
Absolutely. That's what it's for. It's for a stage and a fire pit. And I think there's one other thing. But Nick needs to walk through the standards for that.
All right, and we have the applicant at the podium?
Tais Delas Reyes. My husband Adam and I own Athena's Cantina and Athena's Food Truck Park. We did have some confusion on it. We did clarify it with liquor that because, so we are not serving alcohol, obviously. It's not directly across from the restaurant, nor is it attached to the building itself. And that is kind of a liability that we really didn't want to take on right now in the park anyway. So, we're really not exploring the possibility of BYOB or anything alcohol-related at all. We just want to get the process moving and allow to have the entertainment out there. So, when we initially asked for it, our thing was we wanted to get our renewal license, as always. Never had any issues with it or any complaints. We've always abided by the 10 o'clock noise ordinance. All of our entertainment in the park is going to take place starting from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock. So, we're going to be an hour well under the ordinance hour time. Obviously, we want to respect our neighbors as well. And as once 9 o'clock comes into play, most entertainment that is not too large is going to go directly into the cantina to go on until that 11 o'clock performance or whatever we do. I know that Nick did mention that our fire pit and, so it's the fire pit and what else was it? Fire pit and?
Stage.
The stage is not a make it or break it for this at all. We're not worried about it. If this is a no-go with inspection with Nick, we're willing to let that go for next year because we already have the placement. We just wanted a little bit of a height to it, but that's not a make it or break it for us. The other thing with the fire pit, he did say that it's only for a 21-day approval. So, that's where it confused me when the temporary activity permit falls in. So, does that mean that we will have to reapply again? Or do we just continue on for the six months?
So, the way it works is the code officer can grant a temporary activity permit for up to 21 days. If the activity is going to last more than 21 days, it has to go to the project review board for concurrence, which is not a site plan or performance standard review. It's simply a agreement with the code officer.
So, is that something that we would have to apply ahead of time after the 21 days? Because it is six months. So, Nick would just keep pushing it over unless we break the rules?
No, my understanding is that once you apply, and on your application, it's for more than 21 days if you're going to do it for the season, that that then would automatically flow on to the next plan, project review board agenda and be part of that information sharing-ish.
Okay.
Approximate.
Because we have multiple things going on, and you can exempt some stuff that aren't even there.
So...
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure we're being crystal clear with Tais about what the expectations are so that she can get on with the business.
My concern is, is that we're going to get everything done and then there's going to be one thing that we missed. So, I kind of want to just get on everything, just make sure that our, our entertainment license will be able to carry to the park if we're not serving alcohol. I just want to make sure that that doesn't affect anything moving forward or when we start the, when we start our first show, which is June 7th, we have Motor Booty coming. So, I would have wanted to get to that point, we have it, and then we have to step back, close the park because there's an issue. So, we want to make sure that all our licensing's are all right, especially with the entertainment. That's my biggest concern. So, but outside of that, we are willing to, obviously, again, like I said, entertainment won't go past 9 o'clock, just to obey the ordinance, ordinance sounds and everything, so.
Thank you, Tais.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we need any clarification?
Just to make sure it's conditioned.
Yeah. So, the items on the floor have been moved and seconded with the condition that code officer still has to approve the permit. And, and fire, have to, have to approve the permit for that to happen. But we're encouraging staff to make that crystal clear for the applicant so that that can be, all the hurdles can be taken out for that process so that the applicant knows what to do. All those in favor of granting the special amusement permit? Any opposed? Permit's granted. All right, our next item is item number 145-24. This is the first of, I believe it's five public hearings, one, two, three, four public hearings that we're setting for the month of June, various dates, mostly on the 18th. This item is related to a public hearing for proposed amendments to Chapter 21 of the Freeport zoning ordinance and to the official zoning map. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 18th, 2024, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM at the town council meeting, at the, sorry.
Starting.
Starting at 6:00 PM at the town, starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport, Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss amendments to the shoreline zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Second. Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. So, we're setting a public hearing for the 18th to discuss changes. And we have planning staff here, maybe on the hall. Do we need any context for this before we set the public hearing?
So, this is all wrapped up in the floodplain ordinance. So, as you know, the changes to floodplain are required by the state. I'm not going to say FEMA because we're not so sure they're required by FEMA, but they're required by the state of Maine. And those changes, there are some changes in the shoreline zoning, the subdivision... ordinances. So, Caroline, would you take this?
Sure. So, this is, I would say for the most part, really not substantive because you're considering a floodplain management ordinance on the 18th. One of the recommendations in the new model ordinance is that we switch terminology, which is fun. So, instead of calling it a 100-year floodplain, they're calling it base flood elevation. So, we had to go through these four documents, reference base flood elevation, match some of the terms for base flood elevation. They don't call it floodway. They called it something slightly different. So, really, this is pretty minor, not that it's more paper than it really is amendments, to mirror definitions where needed. The only one change here that is substantive, probably in a beneficial way, is state law for non-conforming structures has limitations on changes for height. They did put a provision in to allow people to go higher if it's to comply with the floodplain changes. So, that is included in the shoreline zoning. Otherwise, it's really just kind of aligning it. And I would say the less portions of interest, just definitions and terminology. I'm happy to answer other questions or go into more details if you want.
Questions for Caroline? We'll digest some of this before our next...
Yeah, I will just note, we are in a timeline, so we're doing a little bit out of order. We're coming to you first. We're going to Planning Board on the 5th. The Planning Board will take these up. Tomorrow, we're stuffing 800-plus envelopes at the request of the council to make sure everyone in one of the flood areas is aware that there's opportunities to comment at both the Planning Board and the council. And these changes could impact the portions of their property in the floodplain and resource production.
And just to clarify, Chapter 21 is, there's, we're amendments to the zoning ordinance?
Yep, you're doing zoning ordinance and zoning map, the subdivision ordinance, and the shoreline zoning ordinance.
Right, and then the next two items cover the subdivision and the shoreline.
Yes, yep.
We'll specify those.
In the summary.
Yeah.
Apply to all of them.
So, this action item number 145-24, just to be clear, is for a public hearing on amendments to the zoning ordinance and the other...
And zoning map, yep.
The end zoning map. And the other, the next two items are related to shoreline and subdivision. All right, any other questions? Now we got that clear.
Will we be able to see the new floodplain maps?
Yes, I have a link to the state website where you can do a side-by-side comparison. It comes with pages of instructions. I'd be happy to share that with the council and we will be sharing that link when we send the letter out to the community.
Eric?
Do we know, and this, I guess, is a question for both Caroline and Sophie...
Do we know, and this, I guess, is a question for both Caroline and Sophie. I know we've still sort of just been hovering around whether or not our proposed changes are going to be allowed or whether we have to adopt the language from the state. Have we gotten any further or will we get further before?
I'll look to Sophie on that one. There's a lot of moving pieces.
So what we know is that while the state is adopting something that is not in FEMA's is not a FEMA requirement, the language in the regulation is that they have to adopt FEMA maps and state-related state requirements. So that we know we have to do, we got the opinion from the attorney that told us that. But the second piece is that evidently the Freeport Town Council carries a very lot, a lot of weight because after the town council meeting here, there was a meeting of officials from floodplain, DEP and some other, DMR, Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Marine Resources that came together and are looking at that and looked at how the proposed rule in the velocity zones that required engineering played, had an interplay with other statutes. And my understanding is they're working on subsequent language change. I don't know what that looks like yet, but she has promised they're working as fast as they can with a hope of having it here before June 18th.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, item number 145-24. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is set for the 18th for the zoning ordinance. The next item is item number 146-24. This particular one is for the subdivision ordinance, so we can specify that in the be it ordered. Counsel Fornia, could you please read the item?
Again, be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 18th, 2024 at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street to discuss amendments to the zoning, shoreline zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Second. Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded, very similar. We just heard from Caroline, any particular questions about this one, which relates to the subdivision ordinance? Because we have three different ordinances where the floodplain management and base flood line, base flood plain? Base flood elevation is referenced. We have to amend all three, so that's why we're doing it separately. All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is set for the 18th, which definitely starts at 6:00 PM.
Is it really 6:00 PM or is it 6:00 PM?
All right, our next item is number 147-24, the third of the floodplain discussion items. And this one is for the shoreline zoning ordinance. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read what time this meeting starts?
Sure I will. Yeah, sure I will. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 18th, 2024 at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street to discuss amendments to the shoreline zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Second. What was the time that that's? Just beating it into the ground here.
I've been flying all day, so I'm like ready for that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one, which is related to the shoreline zone? We're setting the public hearing. We'll have lots of comment, I'm sure, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is set for item number 147-24 on June 18th. Our next public hearing is to consider a renewal of special amusement permit for the Harris Seagut Inn. You have information in your packet. This is a public hearing set for June 4th. Counsel Brenoy, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 4th, 2024 at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street to consider a special amusement permit renewal for the Harris Seagut Inn.
Second. Any questions about the information that we had in our packet or reasons to discuss this item before we set the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Public hearing set for the 4th for the renewal of the special amusement permit for the Harris Seagut Inn. Our next item is item number 149-24 to consider action relative to an allocation of ARPA funds. With the clock running out, those have to be designated by September of 2024. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that $10,000 should be allocated from the American Rescue Plan ARPA funds as pilot funding to support direct expenses related to the work of the Freeport Police Department Alternative Response Services.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Sophie, you want to give us some context on this?
Actually, I'd really like our police chief, Nate Goodman, to stand up and do this. I will say that Nate and Glenn Tatro and I are the ones that work together on this project. I'm bringing it forward because I think I am recommending that we, that we look at doing something like this.
Welcome, Chief.
Hello. So the, kind of the genesis of this request came from information that we've received back from Glenn on the work that he's doing kind of on a ground level every day. And we've tracked kind of his contacts with people in the community and then tracked the number of cases that he's had coresponding with police officers and following up. And in doing so, we found that he has a very much a need for access to, a lot of times it's small things, but a need for the ability to help people in real time at odd hours. And oftentimes, there aren't staff here at Town Hall or at the PD where he's able to get funds to help people in need or to get clothing or to get some gasoline or to get a night's lodging at a hotel when something has happened that's maybe not crisis, but it's, you know, bordering on that. So we were trying to find ways with which we could kind of empower Glenn to help some of our citizens as, as he's doing his follow-up visits. And, and this was kind of the, where we started coming up with this plan to allocate some ARPA funds to perhaps give him an outlet to use some funds to bridge some of these little gaps that we have in service. So that's why I'm standing in front of you tonight.
So I would just add to that, I think what we identified during our conversations were two issues. One, that Chief and I are working with finance to solve, which is access. But the other one is the Freeport Police Department has a really small budget. Well, it's a big budget, but it's very much allocated to the things that have to happen annually. And because of that, there are no funds available. So we, we created a program. We hired somebody to be the alternative response provider. And we gave him an old cruiser to drive around with when he's at work. But beyond that, when he is getting called out at 2:00 in the morning and somebody needs gas, they need to get from here to their safe place and they have no gas, that has been coming from places that we cannot have employees take money for town services. And when we are hearing that we have people who are ready to enter into otherwise paid-for or funded crisis counseling, inpatient care, substance abuse counseling, but there is a deposit that is needed before you can walk through the door, that to me seems like a reasonable thing for us. If we're committed to this program, which I really think we are, I think we need to be able to think about what is legitimate funding and what are legitimate expenses. And so Chief and I are here saying we'd like to give him until December 31st to work the program the way he has normally worked it and report out very specifically what the money is used for. By case, we won't know who that is because of confidentiality, but we would then, he would be able to track that person's progress or whether or not we're having repeated crisis with that individual to see how, whether or not some of those activities are actually making a difference before we come back to the town council next year and ask for funding for the program. And it will also give us an idea that for six months, which is through kind of some of the busier times, we would have a sense of what we really needed. And so when I thought about things I've heard from the council, which one of the things I heard was we really wanted to use ARPA on things that we would otherwise maybe not be comfortable just out of the gate doing, this seemed to me to fill two needs and address a, an issue that needs to be addressed.
I got, just two quick questions, Chief. One, do you have a sense, I know it's still very early in, in the implementation of the alternative response, but do you have a sense of roughly, you know, how effective it's been in terms of diverting what would otherwise be a roll call for our primary force? And this has allowed them to focus on other issues that are of much more sort of health, safety and criminal activity versus essentially doing the social work end of this?
Yeah, we are, we're tracking as best we can. We're tracking Glenn's contacts, community contacts, as well as his follow-up with PD, co-response with PD, and then follow-up to those locations after PD is no longer involved. So once the scene is safe, he can take over. And he had, he passed his one-year anniversary, I think in March, which is amazing to me that it's been over a year. And he had, I think at the end of March, on his anniversary date, he had 538 community contacts. And that, those were all either co-response with PD or individual cases. Those don't even count, if he has a contact and then follows up six times with them over two weeks, we're not counting that. We're, I'm just giving you the raw numbers of.
Unduplicated, yeah.
Individual cases. So all those cases and contacts and reports that Glenn are writing and he, would all be hours spent by officers handling the same task, but in a less efficient manner.
Yeah.
Glenn has, he has 20 years' experience. He knows, he can text and email and call shelters and he can get people matched up with the services they need in blazingly fast time.
That's precisely why we have the position in place, so that's.
Yeah, it's been wonderful. And for the officers to recreate what he's doing, it would take them, we think it's about a four-to-one ratio. It would take about four hours for an officer to accomplish what Glenn accomplishes in about one hour. So it's a huge resource savings on the PD side as far as our budget, but it's also providing a wonderful service to the community as well, meeting a lot of needs. So we're seeing benefits all across the board.
My second quick question was, towards that end, is there any particular technology that this position needs in order to do that position, I mean, to do that work, recognizing that it's at odd hours and by themselves and without department support sometimes?
Actually, the Town Hall staff has been great. This is just new ground for everyone and Jessica and Finance has been wonderful. And the Town Manager's been wonderful, helping us get, we need to dissource some laptop computers and some monitors and things that we didn't have in the budget. And they really went above and beyond to do what they could to support us. So that's been great because now Glenn can take his computer, he can set up with somebody, he can help them fill out applications to get treatment. And he can kind of really assist people through the, those first steps. He goes to the hospital, stays with them through the screening, helps suiteser with placements. The list of stuff that he does is off the charts.
Fantastic. Thanks. Joanna?
I think this is great. It's evidence-based and has clear impact. I love this kind of program. I think it's important. And I mean, 500-plus contacts is a lot for a year. Is there more demand than Glenn can handle himself?
He's an amazing bundle of energy. He really, he loves his work. He loves working in Freeport. He tells me once a week, he's thrilled to be here and we're happy to have him. And it's really a big thank you to the council for standing behind this. You know, almost two years ago when we started this, talk about this program. It's been wonderful for Freeport, in my opinion.
I guess my question is, you know, can he, is there more need out there that can't be met? Like, it's not because of Glenn and his energy, but because of just the sheer volume, yeah.
I think he's doing well right now, but I think it's worth assessing and evaluating as we go. He hasn't reported to me, we, we meet formally once a week, but we talk every day. So he hasn't expressed any feelings that he's getting behind, but he did, he did, he works at a crisis call center in his off-hours and he did scale that back. And in some other part-time things, he was doing at other Opportunity Alliance and some other places. He quit those because he's, he's pretty focused.
I would just love to make sure we stay in, mindful of that, just because of our conversations of burnout and overworking high-quality folks, we want to make sure we stay ahead of that, so.
I agree 100%. And we'll be able to sit down and have that conversation and make sure we're keeping ahead of that, not getting behind, for sure.
Other questions? Daryl?
100% support the expenditure of this, but when I look forward, we have seen that there are significant resources been allocated for mental health issues in the program we're doing here at the state level and even some at the local level. So I'm hoping that, and I know the answer probably be yes, that we keep a detailed record and when we have the opportunity to reimburse or to add to this, that we take that opportunity. I, I think it's important that we try to look at those resources out there to, you know, help offset whatever costs is going to go to taxpayer.
Matt?
I think this is great. Thanks for, for doing this, Chief. Question in terms of sort of piggybacking off what Joanna said. Is Glenn providing any sort of in-house training to existing officers to help when he's not available so that you cut down on that four-to-one ratio of you're taking four hours for a regular officer to do what he does in an hour?
Yes, so we haven't, he's hit the ground running and we, while we haven't had, normally we have monthly in-house trainings. We haven't had him present at any of those yet just because he spends so much time with the officers. I'm really seeing his abilities rub off on the officers. So I'm seeing them pick up on a lot of the things that Glenn does. So I'm seeing a lot, very much a, kind of a spider web of technique being passed back and forth. And I always used to joke that most of our officers are social workers with a badge. And they do a good job with that anyway, but I'm seeing a really big upstep with their abilities to have been increasing as well in this, just from being with him for, you know, 20 minutes at a call and working these, some of these things together. Because you're right, when he, when Glenn goes home at, you know, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night, the officers are then handling that if they have to go back at 2:00 AM. And it's been, I won't say it's seamless, but they've done a really good job carrying through the groundwork he lays out.
Dan?
One question for Sophie, they might both be for Sophie, two questions. One is, can we add structure to the program just in terms of oversight to protect us, to make sure we're doing the right thing, but also to protect Glenn so that he has something to rely on when someone says, you paid for this, why won't you pay for that? Or how do we know he's spending or are there caps on what he can spend and who he can spend it for, what types of things? So we don't need to hash out the details here. What types of things he can, so we don't need to hash out the details here, but as long as you and Jessica are comfortable that there's some oversight and structure, that would be great. And then the second comment is, if we allocate $10,000 between now and December 31st and then try and determine how, what the needs of the program are, I have a hunch our assessment will be the program costs $10,000 for every six months we want to run it. So my question's about the duration. Is that $10,000 something we can appropriate over 12 months? Or what's the plan for, what do we do between January and June? So where'd that six months come from?
So the six months came from the fact that our funds have to be obligated by December 31st, 2023. My hope is that some of the things that we identify, 2024. Wow. My hope is that some of the things that we identify might be contracts that we can enter into with other providers. They might be gas cards that we hold under lock and key. They might be gift cards for certain, like Walgreens or CVS, I guess, or CVS here, yeah? But, so the thought is to kind of look at what we need. And I would think of this as a one-year cost. I'm not asking for $20,000 for a year. That might come, but not, right now I'm thinking of $10,000.
Okay. Thanks. That helps.
Any other questions? Thanks for the information, Chief. Sophie, it's great to hear.
Right. Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is an executive session discussion concerning a real estate matter. Dan, could you please take us into executive session? We will be coming out of executive session and continuing the meeting. We have a budget workshop scheduled for right after this, so I believe this will be fairly brief.
I think so. You guys have all the material.
Yeah. So we'd ask you to please just step outside, and we're going to go into executive session, and we'll notify you shortly.
Yeah, to consider action relative to an executive session pursuant to one MRSA, Section 4056(c), pertaining to a real estate matter dealing with town-owned property at 55 Main Street in Freeport, and move that the Town Council enter executive session.
Second. Move and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call on executive session?
Yes. No, just it needs to be a three, a two-thirds vote.
Yeah. Okay. So we are in executive session.
I would suggest that we...
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So as a result of executive session discussion on 55 Main Street, Councilor Pilch has a resolution on the activity?
Yes. So I think our resolution is that we're about to request that we table Item 15124, hopefully to the next meeting. And we're close, but we have a little bit more legwork to do before we're ready to move forward with that motion, I think is where we landed.
I'll second that.
Yep. So given that, I'll make a motion to table Item 15124 until our June 4th meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Before we get to our budget workshop, we have public participation for those participating electronically in our meeting, those online. Anyone online, if you are interested in addressing the council on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand electronically or indicate your interest, and we will move you over to an active participant. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and tell us who you are and where you're from.
Somebody actually just left.
There's a message right there. Okay, I don't see any hands coming up. We'll close the virtual public comment and move on to other business. We are in nearly our penultimate budget workshop. Almost. We're going to, we're going to vote on this next month for sure, because we run out of real estate if we don't. So we had a number of presentations at our last council meeting relating to the operating budget. We were all given some homework to think about. A particular list that was in the operating budget, specifically funding for outside agencies, as well as any other questions about the operating budget of our Finance Director. And I don't know if we have any additional presentation planned for this evening, or if not, we can just get right to questions.
Yeah. Jessica is online. She's a panelist. I just don't think she has turned on her video, but I do not...
I have not turned on my video. Sorry.
There we go. I do not believe there's any specific presentation. I think we are here to listen to you and to try to answer any questions you might have.
All right. So for proceeding, before we get to a discussion on the list of outside agency requests, do we have any specific questions about line items or categories in the operating budget proposed for Jessica and/or the manager? Daryl?
Yeah, I think the managers working with staff, we talked about particularly the full-time positions we're costing in public safety at the police and fire. And I know we were questioning, or at least I had questions on possible overtime savings or just that. And I think that's, you're probably still working on, we'll probably hear about that coming up.
So I think it's a lot easier in the fire department if we ended up mid-year, because you're talking about the mid-year, the jumping off from the conversation about mid-year staffing changes?
Actually, the conversation was kind of getting our house in order. And, you know, on the municipal side, it doesn't make sense. Do we move forward those positions now to address the needs? And particularly looking at some of the overtime cost and some of the, you know, positive effects that may have or may not have, both in the police department's request and the fire rescue request?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Good. I believe that's still in the works from...
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So I will, so I would like to see, you know, myself personally, to see what the recommendations are moving forward on that. Then I would have some ideas on this list of, you know, possible funding requirements, although there's a couple there that I totally agree with that we shouldn't be funding that, you know, has been put forward. And I'm not sure if that's something we could do this evening and if that would help the manager and the Finance Director or not.
Yeah, I think the plan was, after last meeting's presentations and some discussion, that we were going to try and have an indication, maybe it's a less than formal vote since we're not voting on a budget, but indication to give the manager and the Finance Director which of those items to, of the outside agency request to include in a final proposal. So we can get to that, but I want to make sure we've got other questions answered first, particularly around line items, because it's a complex budget. Eric?
I have a question that is related to this list, but it's related to the breakdown that we got from Jessica in response to questions that we had. So I don't know if you want me to ask that now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So specifically, it relates to, and I know in the original list, we had Kennebec Behavioral Health included with a number of other larger, kind of wider, in some cases statewide, health organizations. This struck me as slightly different, well, very different, because it wasn't a funding request per se as a request for reimbursement. It's a $60 request. And when you look at their information in here, it's based on the fact that they served X number of people who were Freeport residents. They gave us the total amount that they expended on those services. And they were looking for a, sort of a pittance in terms of reimbursement. And my question is, again, I don't think we're obligated to reimburse them. We don't have any sort of agreement with them or contract that would require us to reimburse them. But I'm just wondering, given their demonstrated expense on behalf of residents of Freeport, why we don't have a line item from which the manager could have reimbursed them for $60? Or where that would have actually come from? I mean, I understand technically it is an outside agency, and it is a funding request, but it is not a sort of general funding request rolled into an operating budget. It's a request for reimbursement. And I just think that if there is some need for us as a part of the operating budget to say... I mean, it's very similar in terms of what we were talking about in terms of alternative response, in terms of helping people get mental health care services when they need mental health care services. If they happen to fall into the catchment of Kennebec, but they're Freeport residents, I'm just not sure why we don't have a way of paying for that small offset that we're being requested.
Can I just clarify? When I read it, so I understand your point. I read it as, it's not necessarily tied to a specific cost they incurred. I think it's probably formulaic. They probably just said, like, we did $5,400 in uncompensated health care to residents. And so our ask to municipalities is X percent of that, and it just comes out to be 60. But you, I mean, I think you're right in that, I mean, that should, there should be a way, a mechanism for us to pay that. But I don't, I don't read it as it's, it's confusing wording, but I don't read it as like...
Reimbursement. It's a funding letter request. It's part of the formula. Okay. I understand.
That is correct. We receive this, I don't know about every year, but we've, this is not the first time we've gotten a request from them asking for this type of reimbursement. And it's not, and I'm, I don't like using the term reimbursement because it's not services that were per se asked of town staff to have performed. It's like any other service agency within our community that operates to assist residents, right, that go to them for services. So that's, it hasn't been viewed as an outside agency in the past. This is just, we're under a new process and just unsure what council wanted to see and what they wanted to deliberate over. It has never met the threshold to be considered within town funding prior.
And we don't, obviously for confidentiality reasons, have any idea why there are six Freeport residents that were part of that?
We have no information on what their numbers are from or who.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions I asked after the fact. One was if we could identify those resources that this initial account was for outside sources. What was stated was, we normally paid for resources that the town usually provided, but we don't have a provider. So most of these outside sources were something the town was supposed to provide. We don't want to stand up a department for that, so we contracted out with somebody to provide those services. So I don't see that on here as which services were those. And two, I also requested what, how much have we paid each of these organizations over the last five years? But, and that's something we could get.
Okay.
I'd like to know what that is. And I don't know if you have it right now, that's, but that's...
Yeah. So the, I'm sorry, I probably did not make it clear. The, what you should have received electronically was an updated outside agency analysis that shows the, it's a different breakout of the outside agencies than what was initially in the packet. That breaks out the FY24 appropriation by funding source, as well as compares it to the FY25 request and the change between the two. So to look at this, the agencies that would require town resources, if they didn't exist, are essentially, and I'm talking with staff, sorry.
Are they, they're the ones above the gray line?
Above the gray line, yes. And so when you talk about the previous five years of funding, I can tell you the average was between $35,000 and $39,000 total over the last five years.
For just the top?
For the, for just, for any and all outside agencies. It may not be this group above the line. It was just, it was essentially like the Porteen Center and Oasis through these doors. Some consistent ones, but others that have fallen off since.
Okay. So above the line, it was about $39,000, and everything below is a lot more.
Correct.
Daryl?
The other question is just going up this evening with the fact that Freeport Community Services will now not be providing that service that they do us. So I would think that that amount must have been in the budget since they just took a vote. So I guess I would be interested to see before we pass the final budget, what was the cost we were paying for that service? That should be adjusted to come back to us for that position.
Sophie has that.
Yep.
So my understanding is that Jessica, was that built into the budget, not as an outside request?
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
That is correct. That is part of the 0301 General Assistance, contracted services at $24,000.
$24,000?
Which, yeah, but not all of that is general assistance, I believe. Actually, no, I'm sorry. That is all general assistance. I apologize. I didn't have my note in front of me.
I would say that if our goal is to, we have to have general assistance. That's not an option. Given that we got final confirmation a week, this week, a final confirmation this morning that they weren't going to be providing the service, I am a little bit nervous about going into the year with $24,000 to administer general assistance. Because I'm trying really hard not to bring that in-house because I don't have a place that I can just lay that job on top of, so it means another body. And quite honestly, we don't have space in this building for another body. So I'm a little, I'm reluctant.
I just want to clarify, I guess the focus of the questions is all on this list. So we can very likely take the requests from Meeting House Arts off of this list on the liaison to that organization. And they're interested in actually providing communication and hosting services in their facility for town meetings and town functions, broadcasting events. And they have the capacity and the equipment to do that. And we have a department that has some room to actually be able to do that. So in talking with Meeting House Arts, we're going to pivot their interest in supporting town communication functions and events into a contract, which would be something that staff can work out later. So it'd come off this list for an outside agency request.
So it'd come off this list for an outside agency request. But, Daryl, you had another question.
I guess the other question I had, did we have an opportunity to discuss the Freeport Community Services, some sort of negotiation, Sophie? Or did they just decide, this is kind of a last minute, you know, deal where we're in the final decision-making process of our operating budget, and then we have this presented to us, which is kind of troubling. So I, I was wondering if there's any discussions of what needed to happen to make it successful there or whatever, or they just decided that they didn't want to do it?
In late April, they had let Jessica know that they needed a little bit more money, which is why, well, we were at 24, but that they needed a little bit more money for the administration fee. Jessica looked at the budget, thought that we had what they needed. And I did not have a clue that anything was afoot until we got an email asking to meet. I had a death in the family, so I had to reschedule. And she emailed Judy, letting her know that she, we needed to meet because they were going to terminate the contract. Yesterday, I had a meeting with the executive director and the chair of the Freeport Community Services Board to let me know that general assistance, administering the town's general assistance program does not align with Freeport Community Services' mission.
So, I guess my question is, if we were to go back to them with, from a negotiating standpoint, is there any open, do you see that there may be any openness of that? Because what I'm, just what I'm hearing from you is, if we were to go to another contractor, we would probably need to increase the budget.
So what I'm saying is, I don't know because this hit my plate this week. Oh, I'm losing my battery. I, what I'm saying is, I am concerned that we might have to negotiate something that will come in higher than that. And if I have to pay somebody part-time wages, it would most definitely be higher than that. In terms of negotiation, I did not feel that there was any room for discussion or negotiation. They came to tell me that we needed to find an orderly transition, which is their right. I mean, they're a private entity, and this can be a risk we take when we partner with outside entities because the world changes and things, you know, change. But for me, it's just really hard when we're looking at a total, you know, service contract of $24,000. That's not a ton of money. And when we looked at the other ways we were assisting this particular agency, it kind of made sense. We were partnering in different ways. But I don't know that an outside agency, that this is the only thing we're doing, would take it for that.
How does this affect the money that we've given them, like the ARPA money? Wasn't that to the general assistance and all that? Is that...
Jessica, can you?
We probably don't need to talk about it now, but it's just a question I have.
Yeah, it is, it is money that was allocated to them out of ARPA in support of the general assistance and rehoming initiatives that were taking place. And that money has been given and expended totally out of ARPA. I think the only thing left is a small amount in what was deemed the gap housing. And there's occasional applications that come in for that at this point, but there will probably be a quote-unquote return. Because we didn't give them that money. We pay for those as they come up. So there will probably be a little bit of ARPA money opening up to, to contract something different for this purpose.
Thank you.
Yeah, not comfortable by any means. Any other questions for Jessica before we get to the list of outside agencies? I just want to make sure we get all those questions asked first. All right, so we had briefly discussed the idea of just going down this list. And again, we're not taking a budget vote this evening, but just giving an indication to staff about what should be included in the final list. It's a little harsh to do it line by line, but maybe if somebody has another idea of how to do it more efficiently, I'm open to that. But otherwise, we just go down the list and sort of raise our hands and if we're supporting it or not.
Do we ever get, I don't know, we were also talking about, is the town fully funded for what we needed, you know, as far as having enough staff and not burning anybody out? And I know that's a bigger question, but...
Well, that, those are two questions on Daryl's plate, and two of those positions are on this list for, to get to that exact thing. Those were positions that would be, well, I don't even want to propose what the departments might, needs might be, but that they were considered, but not recommended by the manager. And they're put here in case the council thinks differently and wants to approve the money for it. I don't believe there's any other department that's in that position where we've got staffing challenges, where we're not sure if we have enough people.
The town of Freeport...
I don't believe so.
The town of Freeport operates on a shoestring budget. It, staff, since I have nothing to do with it at this moment, I haven't been here long enough to really deal with that piece and make an impact. I will tell you that staff here does a remarkable job squeezing the budget. I will also say that if we gave Earl more people, then he wouldn't be quite so far behind. If he had a deputy, he'd be able to get more stuff done. I could go right down the line with who could use more people, and especially outside here. I, I feel very strongly that we have people who didn't make requests this year because they knew that I was making some pretty major requests for organizational change. And I'd like to see how that organizational change plays out before we start doing other things. I, I think there's an opportunity here through discussion to find some efficiencies between departments. Nothing that would save, you know, like many, many positions. But just looking at Earl right now, I look at his shop, and I do not know how he does what he does with the number of people he has. So I think everybody needs people. The difference is with everything outside of police and fire, when people aren't there, when there's a vacancy, when people are sick, when there just aren't enough people to go around, the work slows. And so the way we see it are things backing up. It's, we don't have enough people, we didn't have enough people in code for a very long time. So we just brought Alex in, and when we pull out what should be done, it is an avalanche of junkyards that need to be all addressed at the same time and backlog of issues. I could go through many of the departments. I think looking at public safety around the issue of burning people out is a good one. I don't know that I'm going to be able to come back in two weeks and show you how that's going to play out. I know that in the fire department, which is where we see the significant amount of overtime right now, the overtime, if it is not because of vacancies, what we spend on an hour of overtime will pay for overtime, will pay for the increased benefits that come with a full-time person. So I think we could make those shifts mid-year if it made sense. But we haven't been even close to full staff. And I just, I don't know how that looks at this moment in time. If you want to give me money, I'm happy to take it. But I, I feel weird asking for money when I can't make a data-driven argument for it.
And I get that, and that's full-time employees. But there's also, you say we're on a shoestring budget. There's got to be probably some equipment that we can use to help everybody's out. I'm just saying, before we go giving any of the money out, we should cover what we need, and it may not be full-time employees, but there's got to be, we're on a shoestring budget. I know there's, oh, the printer's out, I'll go use that one because it's there. And we should really have two printers because they're working overtime. So I'm not just talking about full-time employees. That's very important, and I get where you're coming from. But if there's a piece of equipment that, this would make my life so much easier, that's where I am.
I hear you.
So I'm not really giving any extra cash out to anybody until we're running the way we need to be running. And right now, I've heard that we're not. We don't know what it looks like yet, but we're not. And I don't...
Let Jessica respond. Go ahead, Jessica.
I was just going to say, I mean, if what you're looking for is a recommendation of what can be done, or what, if it's a balance of these outside agency funding requests versus town funding requests, I guess, you know, I may be, I don't like not being in the room because I'm not reading the, I can't read the temperament in the room. But if I had to go out on a limb, and if this was last year with, without, with only an interim town manager in place, and you asked me what I would do with this budget, I would tell you, I would just go with the funding for the operating budget as it is for these outside agencies today, and maybe consider doing either more next year or something different next year, and allow Sophie, in her capacity as town manager, to do the analysis that's needed and come to you with a budget better structured next year for a better balance of what may come forward for a funding request next year. The funding request for outside agencies is a slippery slope. I've seen it happen over the last three years when they have come up for discussion that each year we're getting more and more requests. And I've gotten some emails of, well, what is your process for asking? Even since these requests have come in, because it's getting out there that Freeport is going to give. So, and it's not that it's wrong. It's not that it can't be done. I'm just telling you, you're going to have greater questions and bigger balances to make. And I'd rather have you have good numbers under Sophie and the town manager that's in place for the direction everybody wants to move. But that's just my recommendation, I guess.
Thank you, Jessica. It comes with a lot of gravity. You've been doing this a very long time and have steered us in a very positive, fruitful direction throughout that time, at least that's been my experience. So thank you. Daryl?
We have a tendency a lot of times to kick stuff down the road. So I would like to come up with a middle-of-the-road kick here. And I would like to see us approve some funding, not positions, but money for funding that would allow for a six-months evaluation of a manager. So maybe January 1st, they come in and say, ah, we didn't need it for PD, or we didn't need it for fire, or wherever, or we found another need in another area. And if we wait for another year to come in and have a significant budget increase on some of the positions that they need, it's going to be even more painful next year. So I'm wondering if we look at roughly about $200,000 here, not allocated for any particular position in the budget, that goes to a pot somewhere that says, you have some opportunities here. And over years of municipal service, a lot of times, positions would come up and be, taken effect in January 1st and fund for a six-months position, and then you could go for the full year afterwards. I would like just to have the opportunity to, it would mean an increase in the budget, and I understand that, but I think it would be a smaller increase in this year's budget and possibly a smaller increase next year budget to get us where we need to go, as opposed to getting hit with a large significant budget, which this council's been wonderful. We never do that. We have done it, we've been very good at holding our line. But I think we're getting to the point where we're going to have to have some sort of balance out there. So that's maybe what I would like to see happen, so we could in fact maybe have an opportunity to correct some of the areas that need correction within the next year, not waiting for a full year.
Daryl, do you envision that allocation to be then voted upon by the council again before it's actually spent?
Yes, I think that would have to be voted on by the council before it would be actually spent with a plan.
The administrator would know what, that it's available, and they could rely on it.
That way it would be available, and we don't have to go back and do some sort of initial allocation, you know, like in January. But we would have to approve whatever those expenditures were. So we would have the oversight of that. But at least this gives us some opportunity...
Wiggle room and...
Yeah, a possibility of growth where it's needed. And we don't know where it's needed, and I think we'll have a good analysis done, but it gives us tools to work with.
And I also think we shouldn't be giving it, if it's going to raise the mill rate, we're saying, everyone, you're going to donate to this group. And the town's not running where it needs to be yet. I think that is not a very good scenario, unless it's a service, like we talked about, above that gray line.
Matt, you had your hand up.
Jessica, do you, can you give us a rough estimate of salary savings the last, like, three fiscal years, just off the top of your head? Or what you're projecting for salary savings this year?
That unfortunately is not how I typically have that analysis broken down. So I don't know that I have those numbers for the last three years off the top of my head.
This is, this is a tough one to ask, and you're going to want to say no, and no is a perfectly good answer. But do you know, if you had to guess at the number of FTE that you could support any given year on salary savings? Is it one? Is it four? Is it someplace in between? Because what I'm getting at is that there's a mechanism to do what Daryl's saying without allocating money that doesn't necessarily have a purpose and is just going to increase the tax burden on residents? And that's salary savings, so positions that don't get filled. And then there's an ability to allocate that, whereas, and the impact is it just doesn't get transferred to capital reserves at the end of the year. Whereas if we allocate a specific amount above and beyond, and we decide in January not to use it, or the analysis isn't done, or it's not conclusive, all we're doing is having taken tax money from people and then just put it right into capital reserves, which isn't a terrible thing. But it's also, I don't know the best use of taxpayer money at the moment. So if we kind of dial that number in, it might give us an idea of how much flexibility we could be sitting on in January.
So I think we could do some of that analysis when Jessica decides to come back to the East Coast. I also think, I want to go back to the fact that the emergency that we are feeling right now is really in the fire department. That is where we're hemorrhaging the overtime and where we're talking about potentially moving some of these per diem slots to a full-time slot, or to full-time slots, or however it works, right? Remember that the salary for that slot is budgeted in the budget as the per diem. So the increment is not a whole body. It is a partial body. Well, it's just the benefits, which is significantly less. I, doing the math in my head, which is very dangerous, Jessica tells me never to trust it. I think, given some of the salary savings we've had, some of the absences we're likely going to see just through... absences, we're likely gonna see just through regular attrition, we might be able to definitely, we might be able to cover what you're talking about, Matt. I would like to have the opportunity to run those numbers with Jessica and come back with a formal recommendation. I, I too, I understand not wanting to tax people for something that is, that we don't know that we're going to spend.
Yeah, I would just also like to add, I, I agree with what Sophie is saying, but I would like to just add that what you have in the budget is, is, yes, I guess maybe I should back up. What we have been experiencing for wage savings is due to positions that are budgeted becoming vacant at some point during the year. It's not, they're, outside of the fire department, really, it's not that there are positions funded that, that we're not filling, right? Like, they're either being partially filled, and someone leaves, and then they get filled, and it's, the experience level's a little different, so the wage level's a little different. So there's not a large discrepancy between what we budget and what we actually are expending for wages. We, we've hit a little bump, and it's primarily from the fire rescue departments, in that we have budgeted positions that we truly have been unable to fill, and have remained unfilled for a period of time. But it's not that those positions aren't needed, it's that those positions, we, we can't find people to fill the position, and now with a revaluation of what may be needed, yeah, there may be a, a growth or two in that position, but you're also gonna have wage savings from that position not being filled from the get-go, right? So Daryl and Chip, when you talk about, or Matt, sorry, when you talk about, is there a way to fill that gap in? That's typically what we do through the normal course of our operations. Look, thinking about the mechanics work at the public works, that's how we funded getting, getting the mechanic that we needed to get the work done, was from a position that we were unable to fill, and we were able to get a part-time mechanic to start in January, because we couldn't get a position filled, so we filled it with what we could, with the, with the gap in the skill set that we needed, right? And I think I'm saying that correctly. Earl can, can pipe in if I'm not, but, you know, that's, that's, I guess what I'm getting at is that's standard practice, and that's what we do as the staff of the town. And it's what we would do with this budget that's presented before you, when we get to that point of evaluation, and say, seeing what the actual needs are, it's like, well, you know what, this, there's savings in this department, because we have three months' worth of this position that hasn't been filled. If we, if we post now, you could probably get it filled and, and have enough to cover, and we do that analysis to make sure it would work. I don't know if that helps with people feeling a little more comfortable with what's in the budget, and I'm, I'm like, I'm with Sophie on this. If you guys wanted to give more money, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna turn it down. I'm, I'm just trying to give you as, the information that I can to have you make the best educated decision that you can on what you want.
Daryl?
Of course I have made for Jessica and Sophie, if we do not give additional funds and, and positions are brought up that needed to be implemented in January, is there a mechanism where we, as a council, can act and implement that?
So I would never add, I would never add a full-time position without talking to the town council. So I think, just like when we found things that needed to happen in the fire department, it happened to be on the capital side, we went through, and I brought to you a, a request to reappropriate funds, so to move, reallocate what we had appropriated. That's not Jessica's favorite thing to do, budget adjustments, but I happen to like them. So I'm trying to show her how useful they can be.
Can you, Jessica, can you remind me, what's our fringe rate? Fringe rate?
I, yep, I'm, I wanna say the last one, last analysis I did, I, it might, it was between 38 and 42%.
Okay. So, I mean, in theory, we cut back on overtime, we're able to cover the subsequent cost of full-time position with benefits.
Yep.
Okay, so we still have this list, and we need to go through it so we can give direction to our competent staff to make those final adjustments. Again, we had talked about just going through it, or if somebody has a more creative motion, please articulate that, and we'll happy to consider. Eric?
I would like to make a motion that going, going by the list that's in the binder, which is, is related to what is not already included in the budget, that based on the conversation that we just had, that, that the positions that are those first four line items, we, we leave out. Oh, are we, okay. So I may not have the most current list in that.
Right, because in the binder that Jessica used, had on our spots, didn't include the Conservation Commission and the Senior Property Tax Relief, so we should consider the one that was emailed after the original budget.
That is correct. I, I provided electronically the updates to the schedule.
Yeah, we have the Conservation Commission.
Conservation is the first one, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes.
So it's the Senior Property Tax Relief. Which is 150?
Sort of, we decide.
Yeah.
So I, okay, so let me, let me go back to my, I'm gonna leave that one out as a separate piece, but I'm, I think I'm hearing consensus that we have other mechanisms to add staff positions if we need them without.
Without putting them into the budget as of now. That what we're looking at, in terms of human services, what I would like to propose is that we move certain amounts in, into the budget that are increases that have been requested, specifically Oasis Free Clinic, the $50 additional to the Snowmobile Club, that, again, these are, these are services that we're already supporting, and the Farmer's Market, and the Southern Maine Agency on Aging. So those four, I'm, I'm taking John's word that the Meeting House Arts line item is going to be housed somewhere else on a contract basis, and I'm gonna leave those other high-ticket items alone, which is the scholarship and the Tax Assistance Program.
What's the total of that recommendation, Eric?
That would be. It would be two, it would be $3,300.
$3,300.
Are you leaving out the Kennebec Behavioral Health, Northern White Health, Life Flight?
Yes.
Can I ask why?
Only because I was looking primarily at what the local organizations were, more specifically.
In the origin I asked the question, is I don't know that we can't draw a distinct line for at least some of those for local support. I mean, Life Flight, I think it's, you know, it depends. But I, I just wanna caution us that, you know, supports of this nature, while we can't tie it back to a specific person, they do support our community, and without those services, the community may have to come up with funding in a variety of other ways to support those neglected needs. So it's not this, it's not a, it's not our problem, it's a, this is a mechanism that supports community members, and it's really hard to dial in, you know, what that means. And if we don't have those types of supports in place, people may go to FCS, or they may go to the emergency room, or they may go to the, be calling the fire department. I mean, you just never know. So for that dollar amount, I, I think it's of value to our community, so I would include it as well.
I, just to respond to that, I think the reason why I was starting with those four, and I think we, we're gonna need to look at other sep, line them separately, keeping in mind the conversation we've had previously about the fact that that seemed to be more of a blanket request to every municipality in the state, and, and also Jessica's admonition in terms of that creep of merely inviting even more statewide organizations to come to us. I guess that's why I'm, I was looking specifically, I'm, I will say I'm even on the edge on Southern Maine Agency on Aging, because that's regional rather than local, but it also is specifically our region as opposed to a statewide piece.
And can I understand your, your proposed motion, Eric, that, that that would be the entirety of the recommendations going forward?
Nope. It was, it's just those specifically, with the understanding that we could have a further discussion about the tax program and other things.
Okay.
And also, to clarify, this would be the increase to the budget, this wouldn't impact the amount that they receive for FY24.
Right.
Well, this is, and this is only the increase for FY25, in addition to what's already in the budget.
Correct, yeah.
And some of these requests are not in the FY24 budget.
Correct. So, so they're entirely.
Okay, so we have a motion for a specific number of lines totaling approximately $3,300.
Just to clarify, Oasis Free Clinic, Snowmobile Club, Southern Maine Area and Agency, Agency on Aging, and Farmer's Market.
Yes.
So this would only, this wouldn't impact sort of the organizations that received money in FY24 but aren't requesting an increase that are on this list, like the Historical Society, for example.
Correct.
Those are already in the budget.
That's already in the budget.
Yeah.
So there's a motion.
Second.
Second. Questions for Eric?
I'm not sure if Eric or Jessica can ask me. What was the Farmer's Market funded for? This is an additional request, what are they getting?
They got that same amount from ARPA last year.
So just be moving it to the general fund.
Right.
Correct.
Is this a, a motion, I'm supportive of those things, is this, but what is the motion?
It's really just instructing the staff.
Right.
We're not voting on it, is it, we're gonna have to vote on the whole budget, it's really more of a, can we just move this along?
Right.
And if this is not, if it's more efficient, you just go line by line?
Line by line discussions when we have three hours left to vote the budget in at the end of June, so that's part of why we're trying to get it out tonight. So that's why I'm trying to move through to see, which is why I proposed a line by line up or down.
We can just do that if that's easier.
Yeah. I haven't anything to say, actually.
I was trying to just deal with human services.
Just trying to save us four votes by, with one vote.
I do have a clarifying question for you, Sophie. The Conservation Commission, the MCC assistance, the $9,000, I know we have ARPA funds, what's the, what's the relationship between that $9,000 and the $18,000 in the ARPA?
So, Jessica?
Yeah. The $18,000 is what the Conservation Commission, I, I believe it was the Conservation Commission, asked to use to bring in the Conservation Corps for the FY24. And I believe, with the, the way it was presented for FY25 by the commission was that the $9,000 would be great if there were grant dollars available, but they don't know that they would put it into the budget because of the $18,000 that they have from this past year. So it's not, it was not a, we need this in the operating budget, it was more just, it would be nice to have if there's funding available, and that's why it's on the list to, for deliberation.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm understanding, this doesn't impact that $18,000, they would still.
It does not.
Have access to that as needed, okay?
Correct.
So we have a motion from Eric, and a second, we ready to vote on that? And there might be.
Sorry, and that's, I, just to clarify, that's assuming they have something under contract before the end of this year to actually obligate those funds from ARPA, just to put that out there. I don't want to, I don't want you to find out that money goes away because it's not obligated out, but as, assuming it's obligated by the end of the year, well, they'll be good for that service.
Heard, thank you.
Yeah, I believe the line items outlined in the motion are.
Would be the additional 750 for Oasis Free Clinic, the additional $50 for the Snowmobile Club, the, the $1,000 addition of Southern Maine Agency on Aging, and the $1,500 addition of the Farmer's Market.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's an indication to staff that there's support to consider that additional $3,300, just to keep us moving along.
Well, I'll bring out my pet peeve, if I could, is that's the Tax Stabilization Program.
Yeah, no, that's on the list.
Yep.
I'm, I'm just gonna go down the list here, just so that we just kind of keep moving. So items that we have not addressed would include four positions that are outlined at the top of that list.
Is the Conservation Commission a position?
But it would be, yeah, all right, so the three positions at Fire Rescue Police and Library. We've had ample discussion about whether or not we move that forward, or do we let the staff come back and tell us that they can fund it with additional savings found elsewhere? Do we want to provide an, an undesignated allocation to the manager to, to do that?
I think with all the talk we've been having, we need to do that. The full-time positions, the part-time positions, I mean, I think we should have done that probably before we did the other, but that's.
You wanna make a motion, Chip?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, the Fire Rescue Police and Library, that we should fund that.
I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Okay, moved and seconded.
This.
Go ahead, Daryl.
My question is, if we do vote a position, then we are bound to fill those positions, right?
We're not voting anything tonight, we're just giving an indication. But we can, we can describe that to the manager, that if we, if we provide authority to put money towards staffing, and not necessarily.
And I'm getting back to Matt's discussion of some of the full-time savings we have on, on FTE, full-time positions, and I, I don't want the money there, Chip, I agree with you, I just don't wanna get locked into, these are the three positions we're going to do. I would be all in.
You want it for, can we change it then? I mean, this was a request, right?
Yeah, this was a request, so. I, I love the idea that we know what the request is, I think it's prudent to have that money in the budget, I just think an analysis needs to be done, it may come out as a six-months process, that's the only difference I would think.
Okay.
That's fine, and if we don't, if it's there and we don't need it, then we can use it for something else, right?
That's, would be my intent.
But it's there, so.
I, I think, I think it takes a small bite this year, and we're not gonna get really nailed next year, that's what I think, but I can be, I can be proven wrong, but.
Do you want to amend your motion at all, Chip?
To, to what? I mean, I think. Four, okay, two, all right. We'll allocate this amount of funds instead of just to Fire Rescue Police, but to the town manager for positions that the town might need. the town manager for positions that the town might need.
And the sum total of that is? Two twenty-seven, one fifty.
Could that go, could that be fluid? I'm just thinking about like the library part-time staff is getting lumped in with police and fire and rescue, and that feels like a separate conversation. So if that, could that amount be kind of fluid in that?
That's why I was trying to make it fluid to say, this is what we need.
I believe the intent of the motion is for a designation of additional budget authority left to the Finance Director and the Manager to determine where it's best spent. Two twenty-seven, one fifty.
Best spent in terms of staffing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Personnel.
I'll just weigh in with some comments. We are adding $250,000 worth of staffing already to this year's budget in addition to, or maybe part of the $800,000 in increased wages we have. So we're spending a lot more on staffing than we did last year. And when we probed that and asked Jessica and Sophie why this and why that and how and where's it gonna go, they gave really thoughtful responses, and we pushed them harder and said, well, can you give us an overall analysis of where we're short, what we need exactly? What are the functions that are not being done? And I think the answer was, well, these are the things we know, and there are other things that we need to analyze further. So they've put a lot of work into that. So I'm okay with that 800 some odd thousand dollars being added to the budget and the 6% increase and however much that's gonna cost our taxpayers. It's, I would be very uncomfortable going back to my constituents saying, well, we added $227,000. I'm not really sure what it's for, but we might need it, so let's just tax you. And then if we find a position that we need before next June 30th, we'll have the money available. That makes me uncomfortable, so I'm not, I don't want to do that. If we have a need, I'm all for it. And we've had a lot of discussion around what needs do we have. So, so I just want to explain why, why I'm not in favor of just allocating the extra money, and we'll figure it out later.
I totally don't disagree with your thought analysis. Where I'm caught between the rock and the hard place is, we're hemorrhaging overtime in Fire and Rescue. We have significant overtime in Police. And I don't want to get caught up on departments. I want to have a mechanism in place, and maybe this is too much money, where after a period of time, and maybe around January, the town manager comes says, I need a position, and I don't know where it may be. I guess the question I would have, if that's identified, and we do not pass these funds now, can we find a way to bring that position on once it's been identified and once it's been analysis, analysis of the manager? And now, if the question is yes, without passing this money, then great. But if the, if the answer is no, because we didn't fund it in the budget, we have to wait for full year, then I get uncomfortable. So that's...
So I, I hear the question, and I feel like that question's been asked and answered, and then asked again, and then answered again, and then asked again, and then answered again. And I, the answer I keep hearing from the manager, and from the Finance Director, and from half of the other council is, yes, there's a mechanism, yes, we can do it, and it's actually halfway in place already in the operating budget. That, that part of addressing some of those very concerns are already built into the operating budget, and if we find there's even more that needs to be done, there's a way to move funds around to actually do exactly that with what's already written in here.
So what I'm taking away from this discussion is that the council is not saying, the council is agreeing with my concern that we are operating on a shoestring budget. The council wants to fully fund the staff things that need to happen. The council is fully supportive of having a very clear analysis done of what our needs are and what we could do with the budget. And knowing that, I feel very comfortable coming back to council with a report mid-year, and also if there's an urgent need, and if we suddenly find a bunch of firefighters that will come and fill out applications, or police officers that want to come, I would have less concern that we wouldn't, that, that we wouldn't have those mid-year savings to be able to do something. It will meet a, it will mean a bump next year. So you add a position part-year, you gotta fund everything you funded, plus the new position, which is why we'll come back and have that discussion at that point in time.
So here's my concern with that, is that this year it's a little bit, and if we need more the next year, it's a little bit more versus a lot in the next year. That, that...
So, Chip, I came into a town that had a significant backlog, and I have asked my staff to completely revision some of the ways we do business. They're amazing, so they happily jump in and will do what I'm asking them to do. But I just had Earl take on a complete restructure of his department. And right now, I think he's more concerned with keeping the wheels on the bus and moving us forward than what's the optimum staffing level. And so what I really need is for the team to be thinking and understanding how the new structure works and what the new expectations are, and then come to me, we come, and we'll come to you with the same kind of plan that I put in place when there were other things that I saw as urgent needs, with a long-term, so you guys could see the long-term impact and what we, we would be asking the taxpayers to take. It, I very rarely pass up money for the team to work, but in this particular case, I am afraid that we would set ourselves on a path of band-aiding something that really needs to be examined and carefully thought out. And if I fill up completely and where we still have overtime needs, I will come back and I will ask you for help. You've made it very clear that you want to help.
So a motion and seconded for providing an allocation of budget authority, two twenty-seven, one fifty was the dollar amount. I think we've had it explained, and we know what it will do and what it could do, and what the manager's response to that is, was just plainly articulated. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails, two to five.
Can I make a point just about the budget? So I think it's not that we operate a shoestring budget. We operate a budget that meets the level of service we provide to the town currently. And that's an important message because if we want to provide more services or be more dynamic, it's going to make, it's gonna necessitate strategic investment. And that's what I'm hearing everyone say. So it's not as though we're cheaping out on the budget. We are just utilizing the funds to do the services that we said we were gonna do. And as we want to expand, that will take investment. And I think there's a, there's a differentiation there, and I just want to make sure that that's clear to the, the public, whoever's watching, if they are.
And, and I would wholeheartedly agree with that statement.
I do want to call...
Hundred percent, too.
So much excitement. I do want to call it the library piece, the part-time staff. That does feel different, and I just want to make sure that if that's a separate conversation, we have it. Or do you feel like with what you're talking about with your strategy also applies to library staff? Okay, great.
I believe there's two more items left on this list for us to discuss.
I would like, I'd like to make a motion not to, that we do not fund the Freeport Scholarship Foundation request one, make sure that that doesn't move forward. I think they have a ample amount of money coming in for that.
It's not in, it's not in there currently.
It's not in there currently, but I want to make sure we don't add, yep.
So we're voting for these to...
Yep.
The thing that I think we do still need to address is the tax...
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that item yet. So those are the remaining two, the scholarship allocation and the senior tax assistance or circuit breaker program. I would like to make a motion to approve the scholarship contribution so that we can have a vote on it and not just ignore it, since we're having a vote on all of these. I, I think it's actually quite a great example to invest in our young people, so I plan to vote in favor of this, but I have a feeling it's gonna go down quickly. Other conversations about this particular item before we vote, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Freeport Scholarship Fund request.
For 20,000.
Second.
For $20,000.
My thinking on it is, I agree with you wholeheartedly, John. That's a strategic investment we can make for the young people of our town. I'm gonna vote no because I think that they've got a large gift coming, and I'd like to see how they're planning on utilizing that before we go and add additional funds to it. But I believe in scholarshiping, I believe in education, and I believe that this is a worthwhile thing to support. But I want to see how they make use of, of a very large gift that this would be nothing compared to.
What he said.
Okay.
Same.
All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is the, the last item on this list, I believe, for consideration is the proposal, which we do not have a lot of math on yet, but was a suggested amount of approximately $150,000 to provide tax stabilization relief to a particular eligible group of senior property owners in the community to stabilize their property tax escalation.
Or renters.
Or renters. Right, it was renters, right?
So was that a motion?
So I'll make the motion that we consider $150,000 for the property tax and rent stabilization.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, 150.
I think in conversations I've had, there's still a lot of people here, and I think, John, when you brought up the statistics on your earlier presentation from what the state data was and what it's showing us, a lot of people are struggling. So I think this is a very important program. I probably have had more conversations from people that are excited about this, and hope we can keep some of our elderly people within our community.
I think it's a, a great program for us to pilot and to launch. I don't know what the appropriate scope is, but I feel like 150 is high. I would, I would propose $100,000 for the opening year.
Sure. I, I would support that position. I would even go 75,000. 100,000 would be fine. You wanna make that motion to amend John's motion?
Sure. I'll make an amendment to the original motion on the table, that we change the capped amount for this upcoming budget year for the tax relief program from 150,000 to 100,000.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment. Let's vote on the amendment to change from 150 to 100. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The dollar amount is now 100,000. All those in favor of approving, well, we're not approving, all those in favor of giving direction to the staff to add up to 100,000 in the property tax and rent relief stabilization for seniors at 100,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So Jessica and Sophie, there's your list.
So that...
To move forward, theoretically, we'll all hold our opinions consistent between now and when we vote on the budget.
What's the over and under?
So the only question I have is, right now, FCS has requested $31,000 as a contribution in their letter, and it's in the budget. Do you want to continue at that level, or do we want to hold that aside, or what?
That's separate from the money we were paying for General Assistance, right?
They've asked, they asked for 21,000 in operating, oh, they're calling at the operating contract.
Yeah, that is separate. It is, it is separate in the budget.
Speaker, someone.
So, so the General Assistance budget page is separate from the Human Services budget. So the 24 is in one place and the 31 is in...
Yeah, and I would argue that 31 is a fair amount to give them from the other work they're doing. So I support keeping it as is.
So I think there's some analysis needed. The memo outlines that, if you look at the way they roughed out the numbers, like 22% of, you could interpret it this way, 22% of their activity was administering GA. And if that's the case, and we're moving that service out, do they really need 31,000 to support operations? I think it's a fair question to ask. I, I wholeheartedly believe in what FCS does, and I'm disappointed in the decision that they made. But organizationally, they have to do what's right for them. But I want to be protective of being able to support the General Assistance needs of the town with whatever provider we decide to go with. And so I, I would like to see if their calculus changes based on, because they submitted that memo in February prior to the decision. I, reason stands that...
They won't need it.
They won't need as much. So I, I'd like to just do some analysis on that, because we're gonna need more money to support General Assistance someplace else.
Yeah. And the, the request was, the request specifically called out their General Assistance administration as a part of their operations in their request. So unfortunately, I, I think this, this information coming after we've already had that presentation by them, I would like to get more information from FCS about what exactly, how they made the determination and how it impacts the rest of what they're doing on behalf of the community.
Yeah, I think we have a lot of time left for that, but go ahead, Jessica.
I was just gonna pipe in quickly that the, the FCS request has 20, the 21,000, and I'm sorry for stumbling a little, I'm trying to pull the file up as we speak. The 21,000, I believe, is a current contracted amount, the baseline amount that they get. The, there is an additional 5,000 that they receive for summer camp scholarships, that, so when they award scholarships, that we contribute to. And then there's 5,000 that they came to a few years back and asked if we would annually contribute 5,000 to their capital reserve funding. So as it, I believe, as it currently stands, you have flexibility in 10,000 of that $31,000 total request to say yea or nay to. I believe the 21,000 is an established contractual amount. I, I don't know off the top of my head the terms of that contract. I'm, again, trying to find it in my files to, to pull that up and let you know, but that's my current understanding of the FCS situation.
That...
With, with GA being completely separate in the operating budget, much like what we pay for rent being in the operating budget and completely separate from this human service component.
Looking back as far as my tenure anyway, which is 2019, and that's the same $21,000 that they've asked for each year.
That is correct.
You know, that extra 10,000 aside, that 21,000 hasn't changed in the last five years.
That is correct. I think it's been that almost for the full 10 years that I've been here. It might have changed early on in the beginning, but it's, it's been quite a while that it's been 21,000.
So I guess I have one question. I have a $5,000 request for capital, you said, Jessica?
Capital reserve.
Yeah.
We're helping them fund a reserve for the building.
That request was actually given a few years back as an annual ask, and we always separate it out in the budget because it's not part of that contract with FCS. So each year you have the ability to say yea or nay to giving an additional $5,000 for capital funding.
Just as a reminder of a long time in history, 20 years ago, we gave the $100,000 for that facility. So that was a generous gift from the town. So I would question the $5,000 personally at this point. But, thank you, Jessica.
All right, any other final comments? That was our last business item on the... That was our last business item on the agenda this evening.
Should I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you all.